All right, I am going to be calling the meeting to order briefly. The time is now 6:30. If you can have a seat and finish your conversation, that'd be fantastic. Thank you all very much. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We have a pretty good agenda. Supervisor Graham Hudek is out of town today. She is with SEMCOG doing some work for Canton Township. And so I am going to be fulfilling my role under the Charter Township Act by calling us to order, but I will very quickly make a motion to appoint Treasurer Slavens as President Pro Tem for this meeting if there is support.
Support.
All right. It has been moved by myself and it has been supported by Trustee Ganguly to appoint Treasurer Slavens as President Pro Tem for the meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Your meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you and good evening to everybody. Could we have Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. And can I, can I please have roll call?
All right. For the purposes of roll call, this should be brief today. Hi Eva. I will, Trustee Kate Borninski.
Good evening.
All right. Trustee Tanya Ganguly.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Michael Seegrist is in attendance. And finally, President Pro Tem Diane Slavens.
Good evening. May I have adoption of the agenda?
All moved. One, one, sorry. Support.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now we're going to have a presentation. We are going to have the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Presentation by Director Tremble.
Good evening. This evening we have with us from Plant Moran, Dave Helisek, the Audit Partner from Plant Moran, and Philip Feminino.
Feminino.
Feminino, who's the Audit Manager, who came and prepared the audit for us. We also have in the audience here Sarah Clay, our Accounting Manager, and Amanda Wertz, our Budget Manager. Really, we couldn't do any of this audit without them. Sarah really is the key person in charge of this for the Finance Department. As you know, our past few years, actually since Sarah's been here, we've had really good audits and I'll let the Plant Moran speak to that, but it's really Sarah's drive and initiative for the whole township that's keeping us afloat here and making us look good. Our finance team is, obviously helps prepare it, but Sarah really leads that charge. So I want to thank Sarah and I really also want to thank Dave and Philip because they've been a pleasure to work with as far as auditors go. And put a little plug in that I think this might be Dave's very last audit presentation for any client ever as he is retiring, so I want to say thank you for all your hard work over the years as well.
Thank you.
With that, I will turn it over to you and I will put the presentation up on the screen.
Thanks Wendy. Yes, this is my last presentation, so. But Phil and I are happy to be here to discuss the results of the audit, financial statement audit for the Charter Township and for the year ended December 31st of 2024. You should have before you board two documents, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report as well as the communication to those charged with governance. In addition to those two documents, a majority of our presentation will be a graph package, which is similar to what we've covered, covered in the past, which is really going to cover the financial highlights for the township for the past year. The large document, the Act for, truly is a document that's generated by the township. We just, as a result of our audit procedures, give an opinion on that financial statement. So as a result of the audit procedures that we did opine on, the opinion is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give a set of financial statements. What that means is these statements as presented fairly reflect the financial position of the township as of December 31st of 2024 and the change in that financial position, the revenues, the expenditures, statements of cash flows, and the notes that are included within the document. As part of that opinion, there was an emphasis of matter that was included in the opinion. And the emphasis of matter really just highlights that in the township's case that it needed to implement as required by the standards GASB Statement 101 as relates to reporting and recording of compensated absences. As far as that implementation, the township did implement it consistent with GAAP, but the opinion needs to tell the reader of the statement that the reporting has changed in that matter from the, from the previous year. So again, that, that's really all that that paragraph in the opinion is, is doing is bringing into the reader's attention. And again, the township did implement that standard consistent with the way that the standard was written. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Phil who's going to cover the graphs. If you have any questions as you go along, feel free to ask them as we go along. And at the end of the graph presentation, we can discuss any, any other financial questions you may have. And then I'll talk a little bit about our communication to those charged with governance. Phil?
Thank you, Dave. So as Dave mentioned, I'll be going through our graph package, which is meant to summarize this big stack that you have in front of you with the financial statements. I'm really pointing to those key areas. So on this first slide we have here is showing your general fund for the past five years. This is the uncombined general fund, so this is just your 101, your main, your main fund only, not including your community center cable TV. And what's important to note here is that revenue was up about 4% up to 38.4 million. The increase relates to property tax revenue increases as well as interest income. So just due to stronger market performances during the year, higher interest was earned and so that really led to your increase here. Your largest sources you'll see on this graph is state sources, mostly being state shared revenue. That remained relatively consistent, increasing just slightly due to new grants, as well as the next largest is property taxes, which are up about 5.7% this year. So the next slide that we have, we like to show kind of a table showing the, really two things, the timing and the trend. So here, if you look at the 1231-24 column, you'll see that those tax values are based off of an assessment of 1231-2022. It's then levied on 121-2023 and then recognized as revenue actually in 2024. And then the other thing in this trend that you'll notice is just for the past eight years, you've at least had about a 3.5% increase in property tax values. That's from a combination of inflation as well as just development within, within the The next slide shows the taxable values. And so this goes back to 2007, kind of showing the dip from the recession from 2008 to 2012, lost about 20% of the taxable value, and then you have that steady growth from there. And that can't be done just by inflation alone, that is also just from developments within the township. As mentioned on this slide here, this is showing your state shared revenue, so this is the largest source for the general fund from the past, showing really the past 14 years. And so state shared revenue is mostly due on the statewide sales tax receipts, but there is a portion that is dependent on the population of the township, so most of that though is based on the collections. And so you'll see it stayed relatively consistent with just a slight 2% increase this year. And this is based off of the state's year end, so as of September. The next slide now is looking at your expenditures and transfers out. So once again, this is for your uncombined general fund. That was at about 40.99 million, that's about 1% from the prior year. No real significant increases. There are fluctuations amongst the categories, some increases in capital outlay, but there was less transfers out. So in the prior year, there was more transfers out to capital project funds. There wasn't as significant transfers out this year, so there were some increases such as capital outlay and, and general government. The next slide that we have here is looking at your expenditures, your annual expenditures that we just showed on the previous slide and comparing it to your unassigned fund balance. So unassigned fund balances is a fund balance that you have that hasn't legally restricted, assigned, or committed for any other purpose, really can be used on what's needed. And really what this is showing is you have about 7.4 million of unassigned fund balance as compared to your annual expenditures. That's about 18.1%, which we would consider to be healthy. The next couple slides that we're going to go through are now looking at your legacy costs. So this slide right here really helps show that for the past seven years, the contributions that the township has been making are in excess of the required contribution. So in this past year, 2024, there was about 9.5 million of contributions, of which 1.8 million was more than the required. This is done to help try to reduce that unfunded liability, which we'll show in a couple slides and really address some of those legacy costs. This next slide here is showing your funding percentage based on your funding valuation from MERS. So there are slight differences between this number that you'll see here and if you were to look in the financials, just because the funding valuation uses a slightly different assumptions for asset smoothing. So as there's changes in maybe significant income or loss, they'll smooth that out over a couple more years just to not make your annual contribution significantly fluctuate. However, in the financial statements, we are required to show those as at market value so you'll have more significant fluctuations. Overall, you'll see there was, you know, an increase up to the 74% and this is as of 1231-23 because that is based on the reports available from MERS. This next slide is the one I was talking about where it will show your, your unfunded liability. So we show it for both pension and OPEB. Pension is as of 1231-2023, once again based off of MERS reports, and then OPEB is as of 1231-2024. So for your pension plan, that is 69% funded and has a liability of about 58.1 million. That liability actually decreased about 4.1 million from last year just due to market performance of the MERS investments. And as you'll see, the breakdown is about 43% relates to police, 30% fire, and then 20% general. For your OPEB plan, that's at 49% funded with a $40.2 million liability. So there, a little larger portion is related to general. And that liability increased about 4.5 million from experience differences, so there are assumptions used by the actuary and just over time, people living longer or higher healthcare costs and are assumed that'll cause those experience differences, which will then increase the liability. Overall, you have about a $98.3 million liability for both these combined, but both plans are over the state's requirement, so it's required to be 60% funded for your pension and then 40% for your OPEB. But it is important to continue to make those contributions as we're showing a couple of graphs ago, in excess to help really cover that unfunded liability. And, you know, in total, it is about 98.3 million of liability related to these two. The last real graph that we have here is, is similar to what I showed earlier for pension, but now this is looking at your, your retiree healthcare plan or your OPEB plan. And so these valuations for funding valuations are done every two years, so you'll just see that on the bottom of the graph, it alternates every two years, but showing that you went from 19.8 in 2016 up to about 49% funded in, in 2024. And then finally, we do like to just end with a quick review. You know, the, there is a healthy financial condition at the township. Long-term budgeting practices continue to pay off. Development within the township continues to enable growth and positioning itself to address the legacy cost. We do always like to say despite this healthy financial condition at year end, there are always those uncertainties of market volatility, housing market, just things to continue and to continue budgeting for and, and planning for. And as mentioned earlier too, with that, you know, continuing to tackle that 98.3 million liability. And with that, that's what we have for the graph, so if there's any questions related to the financials before.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions?
Phil?
Sure.
Our last required communication was the, the letter that we included in your package. It's our required communication to those charged with governance. It would normally potentially include actually a third section related to internal control. So while Phil had really summarized the financial aspects of the audit, part of the audit requirements is for us to assess the internal control. We don't necessarily offer an opinion on it, but we certainly test the more significant cycles and based on that control testing, really tailor our audit approach to the strengths and the areas that could, we should look further into when, when conducting those parts of the audit. If something were to come to our attention that would really raise a level of concern on, on the township's ability to report that information, we would have a separate communication in writing that would indicate that. And then we'd have to do additional testing around those controls to ensure that we're able to issue an unmodified opinion as relates to the financial reporting. While there's, I would, I would call that, the, the lack of that communication is more of a negative assurance. We, there's nothing that came across during our testing that would have indicated that there was a lack of control in the reporting aspect of, of the financial information, so we've got nothing to report in this letter. You'll recall prior to the audit, Keith, Phil and I had sent a communication to the board that talked about our audit approach, talked about the areas that would be more risky and, and that's on a relative basis from your financial reporting and how we were going to test those areas. Also gave the board the opportunity to reach out to any of the three of us if you had any questions, concerns, or would like us to take a look at, further or deeper into a specific area. And we would have incorporated into that into our, our testing as well. The good news is this Section 1 is really kind of the, the backend of that communication. We really didn't have anything to report from an exception standpoint, from what we had planned to do. We do in this, in this Section 1, do discuss once again that there was a change in accounting as related to the implementation of GASB 101 that I mentioned early, earlier. And the township did appropriately research and implement that standard into this year's statement. There was no transactions that you entered into in which there was lack of authoritative guidance. The disclosures were proper and neutral. You weren't giving opinions. You were stating fact in, in the statements. We had no difficulties performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management and we have disagreements with management. I think, you know, it's not like we're having an argument, it was just would be on the financial reporting. To be honest, if we had a significant disagreement, we would have had a communication to the board to indicate that concern. So overall, you know, you know, really kind of echoing what, what Wendy had said, you know, we had put in a request for documents so that we could perform the audit on a timely basis. The township and the financial, the finance staff and anyone who's involved with the audit really did a terrific job of getting us the information we needed on a timely basis so that we could conduct the audit, be here before the board today and present when, when ideally the board accepts this report at the end of the board meeting. We're going to be able to load that up to Treasury tomorrow, which will allow the township to be in compliance with Public Act 2, which requires the, the submission of your audit within 180 days of year end. So we, you know, a couple weeks before, before that, before that deadline. The second section of this letter is not a required section, but we like to give some information just on what's going on in municipal finance. Now, we focus more on legislative and financial type of items and we're sure you're, we're sure you're inundated with a lot of information with all the associations that you're involved with, but we try to condense it down into one or two, one or two pages that we feel need to make sure you're considering when you're looking outward on a financial report from a financial reporting standpoint. So obviously cybersecurity, you know, is top of mind. From that perspective, we talked a little bit about capitalization thresholds as the single audit standards kind of move around as far as those requirements, the ability to actually maybe even to raise that capitalization on your financial reporting. And then the, you know, for the last couple years, there, there was a couple standards, GASB 87 as related to leases and GASB 96 as related to the capitalization of IT arrangements. And while the, the heavy lift of that standard is kind of passed, just the reminder that you need to continue to review that on a go-forward basis because you could enter into a significant agreement, which would require some, the capitalization of, of, of some of those costs. And then a quick summary on some upcoming GASB pronouncements. Again, finance staff, treasurer's office, everyone involved with the, the audit just did a terrific job in getting us what we needed and happy to be for you today. So any questions at this point? Phil and I would be happy to, to try to answer.
Any questions? Hey, a comment? Okay. Kate?
Yes, thank you for the presentation and for all the work on this. And thank you Wendy and your team for, it's great to have another unmodified opinion.
Tanya?
Thank you so much for the detailed report and, you know, as, every year we, we, we come to see that Wendy and her team, there's nothing to report, like audits happen. I'm also in the, you know, my role and day job is also in finance and we are always terrified of audits, right? But every time Wendy and her team come out with flying colors and also the treasurer's office, so thank you so much and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will just express gratitude to your team and to Plant Moran in general for their roles as our independent auditor and gratitude for our extremely professional finance department who does a great job.
Okay. Thank you. And I too want to thank you both and Wendy. And I know your team was busy down in the treasurer's office as well, so I do appreciate all the hard work everybody has put into this, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a recognition. Okay. So Michael, were you gonna give the recognition?
I most, most certainly will. I was informed that the individual being recognized came all the way down from the Upper Peninsula today where he left his estate of over 100 acres of, of property up there. So pretty, pretty, pretty cool. I would, I would stay up there, but very special for him being here tonight. So this is Resolution 2025-19 and when I'm done reading it, if someone would support it and we vote it, that would be fantastic. And this was submitted by Chief Chad Boa, recognizing police transparency and guidance Subcommittee Member Ted Kiranen. Whereas Canton Police Department recognizes the importance of its community members who volunteer their time to serve on a township committee. Whereas Ted Kiranen was appointed to the Police Transparency and Guidance Subcommittee on July 20th, 2023. Whereas Ted Kiranen's background and experience reflect the richness of Canton's community. Whereas over the past two years, Ted Kiranen reviewed citizen complaints, including incidents involving use of force and allegations of bias. Whereas Ted Kiranen's role as a Subcommittee Member of PTAG has provided recommendations which have guided the police department's continuous efforts to refine police policies, procedures, and training. Whereas Ted Kiranen has helped enhance transparency, accountability, and public trust with the Canton Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton is appreciative of the commitment demonstrated by PTAG member Ted Kiranen and recognize him for his commendable contribution to the Canton community and the Canton Police Department.
I have a support.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Real quick, I'd just like to publicly thank Ted to take out the time, the hours that these individuals give up for their community to work with our police department, to ask the hard questions and in return, deliver that citizen voice into the police department, which never was necessarily present in this fashion ever. So we appreciate that. We appreciate some of the members that are here today supporting their cohort. As Ted has moved into retirement officially, officially with his wife and moved far away to one of the most beautiful places on earth, so we congratulate him. And if you would Ted, you might want to address the board.
Thank you for the acknowledgement. Canton has been a, a great home for the past three years. It's a very diverse community. We like living here, but my heart is in the UP and that's what we're going back to.
Very good. Are you finished by chance Ted?
Yes, I am.
All right. So am I. Go Finns.
Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you PTAG. Okay. Okay. We're going to have a public hearing for approval of the 2025 CDBG Program Year and Annual Action Plan.
This will be in the form of three motions. Madam, Madam President Pro Tem, I move to open the public hearing to hear comment on the Advisory Council Recommendations for the Fiscal Year 2025 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Okay.
All right. Madam President Pro Tem, I move to close the public hearing at 6:56.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe ayes have it.
Then, Madam President Pro Tem, I move to adopt the 2025 Annual Action Plan and authorize the submission of the 2025 Annual Action Plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Have it.
Ayes have it.
And next we are going to go to Boarding Commission's report. Does the Youth Advisory Council have an update?
Hello, my name is Rohan.
My name is Neha. And we had the last meeting of the 2024-2025 year on June 2nd.
So on June 6th, we had our tea night out where we volunteered and facilitated our scavenger hunt to like better help cooperate with middle schoolers and engage, increase engagement within them as well.
On June 3rd, we held a fundraiser for the Yak Endowment at Chipotle and we received a total of $483, which was 25% of the total money brought in from four to eight that day.
We also had a newsletter established that was published on Monday.
And the June D I Board at the block will highlight five observances taking place throughout the summer. The first is World Refugee, World Refugee Day on June 20th, International Day of Friendship, July 30th, World Indigenous Peoples' Day, August 9th, International Youth Day, August 12th, and International Humanitarian Day, August 19th.
And our 2025 to 2026 applications are available right now and they will be due September 19th on Friday. There's also an informational meeting for those who are interested on August 18th, Monday at the block. Anyone who'd like to, more information can contact Chelsea Straub or Chelsea.
Okay. Thank you very much. And would they contact Chelsea through email? Is that how they?
They would.
Okay. Very good. Would you have information, maybe you could leave at the back podium regarding that?
Uh, yeah, we do.
Okay. Thank you. That way if anybody's interested.
And we also had copies of the application itself as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other Board or Commission updates? Oh, oh yes. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. You mentioned that you've established a newsletter. Is that by email or printed or how does it come?
We have printed copies up here as well.
Okay. In the future, if you would like to, I'm sure the board members would love to receive that.
Oh yeah, of course. We'll pass them out. Thank you.
Any other?
Any other questions?
I have none.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the update. Appreciate that. Any Board or Commission updates?
I don't have anything.
Well, the Election Commission mat, of which three of the people, three of the four people up here are on. And we did vote to approve the new maps and the new polling locations. And we are going to be bringing forward a request for Board action for the entire Board to make those modifications and prepare in preparation for the 2026 election, but we're really looking forward to it. Yay.
All right. And now we will go into public comments on agenda items only. Public comments on agenda item only? Public comments on agenda items only? Yeah, so we will move into approval of minutes.
Madam, I stopped myself from doing that. Madam President Pro Tem, I move to approve the minutes from May 13th, 2025, as presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have a motion to pay the bills.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to pay the bills.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we will go on to the consent calendar.
All right. Madam President Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented. Item G, C1, request for resolution of local body of government to recognize Plymouth Pond Team Booster Club as a nonprofit in the community for purposes of making an application for a charitable gaming license to the Michigan Gaming Control Board. C2, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to Seaway Painting for traffic light pole painting and revitalization. C3, consider approving a blanket purchase order to Stryker for monitor supplies for fire. C4, consider a purchase order for Partners in Architecture PLC for the design construction documents phase of the kitchen renovations at Fire Station 1 and Fire Station Number 3. C5, consider approval of a purchase order for sound and lighting support services for Liberty Fest 2025 through 2028. C6, consider approving price adjustment to Dell computer purchase order. C7, consider approval to increase blanket purchase order for Bulk Rock Salt.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it. All right, we will move on to the general calendar. G1, our request for the approval of the Township's 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to, I move to receive and place on file the 2024 Township's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Support.
Okay. As a required state law, the auditing firm Plant Moran performed the Township's Annual Financial Audit for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2024. The results of that audit, which was reported in the Township's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, were covered in detail. We are requesting that the Board Trustee receive and place on file the Township's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The result of this audit was presented by our auditor earlier during the board meeting. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eight ayes have it. Go on to G2. Consider award of CDBG housing rehabilitation contract, excuse me.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to approve a CDBG housing rehabilitation contracts to optimum contracting for the property listed in the amount of $21,000 and to approve reimbursement of all of the permit fees once the work has been completed and approved by the billing department.
Support.
Okay, under Canton's Affordable Housing Program, federal dollars are used to pay for the major and minor repairs to owner occupied single homes in Canton. The participating families must meet HUD's income requirement. Formal bid procedures were followed and the public bid opening was held on May 8th, 2025 for the CDBG housing rehabilitation program. Three bids were received and we're requesting to approve a contract for HUD CDBG funded home rehabilitation project that exceeds the $10,000 purchasing threshold. Are there any questions? Okay, and that would be to Director Trumbull.
Are these 2025 CDBG funds?
These would come out of our previous year's program year.
Okay, I was, I was wondering about that because I heard that some cuts, maybe a lot of cuts were made, so.
Yeah, so just earlier tonight, the Board approved the next funding plan for CDBG housing. That was our public hearing that we had and it did go down a little bit. Our previous year's HUD allocation or CDBG allocation was just over $400,000. This year it was about 380,000. We're fortunate that it didn't get completely cut and it's in the ballpark of last year. So I guess that's kind of the good news out of that, but we did have some available funds left from our previous funding years CDBG allocation. So that is what we are using for this.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? This is a wonderful program and well needed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. We will go on to G3. Consider approving the purchase of 20 Cradle Point R980 modems and antennas for fire.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to approve the purchase of 20 Cradle Point R980 modems and antennas from CDW-G in the amount of $34,042.80.
Support.
The fire department is requesting to purchase 20 Cradle Point R980 modems and antennas from CDW-G for a total cost of $34,042.80. The current modems, rocket modems, are supplied by Utility. The contract with Utility is scheduled to expire September of 2025, necessitating the replacement of these modems. Jamie, do you have any? Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for Jamie? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the ayes have it. We'll go on to four. Consider authorization of a purchase order to Fishbeck for construction engineering services for the 2025 Water Main CIP.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to authorize a purchase order to Fishbeck for construction engineering services for the 2025 Water Main Capital Improvement Plan.
Support.
The following locations were designed for replacement by Fishbeck at the direction of engineering services based on the assessment needs for the replacement by Public Works. One, Carlson Court. Two, Cherry Hill Road. Three, Mott Road. The design and permitting for these projects is nearly complete. The Township Board was awarded construction to Bridget Air Contractors, Inc., on April 8th, 2025, and the construction is expected to begin this summer. As a request for the construction engineering proposal for this project were sent to our five consultants currently under the master service agreement. Four proposals were submitted. All proposals were complete and well presented and provide all the necessary services. Fishbeck was chosen based on the price and their familiarity with the project. Did you want to add anything, John?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick notes. This does entail a full onsite process with Fishbeck throughout the whole construction period. They'll conduct inspections, testing, and validate invoicing for us as well. As we stated in here as well, Bidigiri is the one to do construction on the project. And this was in collaboration with our DPW department, a proactive approach to replacement due to this area has a history of breaks. So engineering did work with the DPW department to identify these just based on the history. I think that's, that's all the notes I'd like to add. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. And we will move on to G5. Is, consider authorization of a purchase order to Manikin and Smith Group for the construction engineering services for the 2025 Water Main CIP.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to authorize a purchase order to Manikin Smith Group for construction engineering services for the 2025 Water Main Capital Improvement Plan.
Support.
As part of the ongoing effort to improve the public water system and provide better pressure, reliability, and service, Municipal Services has identified Ridge Road from Joy to Guide as an important gap in the water system that needs to be filled. Engineering Services is requesting a purchase order in the amount of $70,000 for the Manikin Smith Group to complete professional construction engineering services for the 2025 Water Main Capital Improvement Plan, Ridge Road. John, do you have any, anything you want to add?
Sure, this is similar to the last agenda item where there'll be, Manic Smith will support the inspection services, testing, and validating invoices on this project. This project was a gap that was determined by our water model analysis conducted by OHM. So this was something that was identified through that process as well. We do not have a contractor selected as we're still waiting for Wayne County and Eagle permits to come through. But the design and now we have the engineering complete, that is the next step in the process.
Great. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Go on to G6. Okay, consider awarding a purchase order for sidewalk gap and bridge design.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to approve a purchase order to Fishbeck in the amount of $589,220 and the associated budget amendment for sidewalk gap and bridge design.
Support.
Engineering Services is requesting a new purchase order for $5,800, $5,89,220 to Fishbeck in the amount requested to accommodate the Design and Construction Administrative Services for two pedestrian bridges on Morton Taylor Road and 42 sidewalk gap locations. The individual breakdown on the sidewalks is $453,420 and the pedestrian bridge is $135,800. And it can be found on Fishbeck's proposal. John, did you want to?
Just a quick comment. This is the remaining gaps that we have identified around the places of worship in schools. So this big, large amount of the 42 gaps that are going to be designed does encompass the rest of those, which is a big feat for us. We're excited to have that. And we do have the two bridges on Morton Taylor between Warren and Joy as well, which is near some schools, which is our targeted area. And then it should be noted, these are all being funded through grant dollars to the Township as well.
Okay, great. It's good news. Any comments? Tanya?
Jana, I have a quick question. How many, how much are we covering in this whole, like, you know, what percentage or what is the amount? Do you have an idea as to? You said, is it the high, is it in the high school areas or mostly elementary schools or?
Yeah, this, this will cover elementary and high school as well. The 42 locations I have, and I have a map that should have been attached to, so those, those can, those can be submitted. But what I'm showing through here, it does cover all of those school locations, high school, elementary, middle school, and then a lot of the place of worship. I think it, this covers the rest of those as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kate?
Yeah, I'm curious, because I do see a lot of areas by schools that are covered by this, but I'm wondering about Beck Road south of Cherry Hill. There's a sidewalk on the west side, but there is not on the east side.
Just looking at the map to see that location.
It's, it's not marked on the map, but.
You mean the golf course? Our property?
Yeah, I believe that, oh, sorry, if I may, I believe that's, is this working? Yeah? Okay, good. I believe that's a hole on the Pheasant Run Golf Course. And so Municipal Services did review that location and was actually prepared to put a sidewalk in there and then decided against it just because it's, you know, it's a hole for the golf course and that then there is a sidewalk on the other side of, of Beck as well.
Right, but children would have to cross Beck Road then. Okay.
I have one more question. What about in the high school area on Joy Road? There are some gaps there. You're not focused on that.
Uh, yeah, I do see the location that you're talking about now. There's nothing identified on this map. I will go through, I see Joy to Sheldon to Morton Taylor, Joy to Morton Taylor to Lily, Joy to Lily to Haggerty, and Joy to Haggerty. I listed on their professional service fees. So it does, looks like they're capturing most of it. It just doesn't look like they called it out on the map.
I don't see much around the high schools.
Now, there's already been crews out there, right?
Correct.
We've sent crews out there to survey. I know that. I've had, some of the property owners have indicated that they've been, people have been out there on their property. So is that why, is that why they're not a part of this proposal? Because we've potentially already gone out there?
Chief just reminded me that that's something that we're putting a lot of pressure on the county to help fill those gaps. So that's probably one of the reasons why we didn't call it out in our study and efforts hopefully the county will come through. The good news is as well, if it comes back to that, we do have grant dollars still available after capturing all these, that we can address those areas.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Seven. Consider approval of the Metro Act permit for Ripple Fiber.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to approve a two-year Metro Act right-of-way telecommunications permit to Ripple Fiber and authorize the Township clerk to sign the permit on behalf of Canton Township. Ripple Fiber will provide all as-built drawings of their fiber locations and will abide by Canton Township Telecommunications Ordinance Number 157, Chapter 66 of the Township Code of Ordinances.
Have a support?
Support.
Thank you. In 20, in 2003, Canton Township's Communication Ordinance Number 157, now known as Chapter 66 of the Township Code of Ordinance, became effective. Under this ordinance, the Township must not unreasonably withhold the insurance of a permit to occupy and use the public right-of-way for telecommunication providers. And the application is administratively complete. On August 21st, 2024, Ripple Fiber submitted an On August 21st, 2024, Ripple Fiber submitted an application to the township for a two-year unilateral permit to install various underground utilities within the township. The application appears to be administratively complete. On June 2nd, 2025, several township staff members met with the representatives of Ripple Fiber to discuss the process of installation of the fiber in the township, and this discussion included avoiding negative impacts on existing township infrastructure. John, do you have anything you want to?
Sure. We do, I'm going to say that Jason, the Director of Government Affairs for Ripple Fiber, is in attendance as well, so if we have any of those technical questions, him and his team are happy to vet those out. Additionally, we did meet Friday, June 6th, as well, with the team at our DPW location to kind of go over the procedures that we'd like to see as it'll be in, near our water mains, which is critical to our department. We did exchange those informations between the two folks, and I must say that they've been very accommodating with our suggestions as we have a responsibility to protect our assets too, and they fully understand and are willing to work within those rights. So if there's any questions, we're happy to answer, and Jason and his team are happy to answer those as well. Thank you.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Kate, do you mind going up to the podium, please? Thank you.
This is actually, I think more for John, but... So I saw that the township had posted information to the public about, you know, what is going on with Ripple Fiber, and some residents had posted that work was already occurring in their neighborhoods. Is that true?
That's correct. There has work been commenced. We did have a pause so we could get that communication out and so we could identify and understand the process that Ripple is going through, and Ripple did comply. They were willing to pause it so we could get that communication out. Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that work has started once again. Is that correct?
It has, as with the permits from Wayne County, but we want to get the Metro Act permit authorized here through the Board of Canton Township.
Okay. That was the, the timing was my question, but, you know, if Wayne County authorized a permit, then that's fine.
Correct. Wayne County had a approved permit with Ripple, so they do have that. So they're just helping us out as well by understanding our wants and needs, but Wayne County does have an approval for permit for them to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Just out of curiosity, how are they communicating to the residents on this?
Send letters a few weeks in advance. There's a first letter that sort of indicates that we'll be coming. Then there's a second letter that shares that we'll be working in the public right-of-way in their front yard, which is like the easement area, you know, the ROW, so they know we're not quote-unquote digging in their yard. And then we do a door hanger where our local team, who, we have an office in Plymouth Township just down the road on Sheldon, off of Sheldon, they go out and they door hang things to let people know that we'll be in their neighborhood that week within, you know, three to six business days or so, depending upon, you know, how fast construction goes, whether other items might cause that to be not exactly three to five days, but they do try to notify them, and that includes an 800 number, a website link where you can put any questions or call us to try to clarify any of that. We've also worked with the township's communications folks and Emma at the township as well for any escalations that might come through that. They have our phone numbers and my Director of Construction, who is here with me today, as well as our Regional Sales Manager, who, you know, she might be more focused on sales, but she's also capable of answering those questions about construction, is, she can't sell it until we build it, so.
Okay, so a phone number is in the letter and on the door hanger?
It's on the letter and the door hangers.
In case they have questions, okay, very good.
Yep, he has a sample. He's showing up there, bright yellow, because, you know, we're not trying to be quiet about it. We want to notify everybody and work with everybody. We want to be community partners, not, you know, invasive. There's construction, that's invasive, but when it's done, it'll be a tremendous benefit to the township.
Is this all over the township or?
It will be eventually. Right now, we're starting in a, you know, a small corner of the township, but eventually we will be building pretty much any home that doesn't currently have fiber from our friends at AT&amp;T. We are, you know, we're building any area that does not currently have a fiber to the home service capability, as we are also doing in Plymouth Township and many other parts of Wayne County. About 80,000 to 100,000 passings and give or take $100 million worth of investment.
You'll continue with the letters and the door hangers?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Every, every time.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Go on to G... Consider the approval and signature of the Metro Act right-of-way to Michigan Bell Telephone Company.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to authorize the Township Clerk, myself, to sign the Metro Act permit extension for AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T must still follow township ordinance and file a permit with Canton Township with ASBils and fees for their projects per Canton Township Telecommunications Ordinance Number 157, Chapter 67, 6 of the Township Code of Ordinances.
Support.
Eight. The Metropolitan Extension Telecommunications Right-of-Way Metro Act requires local municipalities to enter into a permit agreement with Michigan Bell Telephone Company, AT&amp;T, for their work in the community. Engineering Services is requesting approval and signature by the Township Board of said permit, extending it through 2029 as allowed by the Metro Act. John, do you have any other comments?
Nothing further to add, just that we always ask for the copies of the permits from the county, so we have on file. And then we do have a review process through engineering and DPW just to make sure that the means and methods are approved by us. Ultimately, the county approves that. We just want to have a checks and balances internal as well.
Sure, yeah, I understand. Any questions or comments? Those, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. And we will move on to G9. Okay, consider, consider Planned Development District for Harvest Creek.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution 2025-18 to approve the Planned Development District for Harvest Creek.
May I have a support?
Support.
Thank you. The application proposes to develop 18 single-family homes on 7.1 acres at 1205 South Ridge, located on the east side of Ridge Road between Payne Street and Proctor Road. The subject property includes the Lower Rouge River and an existing single-family resident on the south side of the property, which is proposed to remain as one of the unit's proposed development. The proposed development is mostly concentrated in the north half of the site. There is one public entrance proposed on South Ridge Road. The applicant proposes to develop the site as a planned development district, PDD, which allows for modifications from certain development standards of the zoning ordinance and requires a project to result in definite, defined benefit to the site and the community. The project sponsor proposes the following defined benefits. Preservation of heavily wooded area and steep tomography on the south side of the near River Rouge. 41% of the site is open space or 2.87 acres, which exceeds a 25% minimum open space required by planned development. The detention basin is oversized to almost twice the volume required by Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, which will then discharge at a rate of 10% of what is allowed by the Stormwater Ordinance in order to improve the storm water management on the site. And architecture to the compatible with River Hill Ridge to the north and east, which is not technically located in the Cherry Hill Village, but is designed largely to Cherry Hill Village standards. However, the proposed homes in the Harvest Creek will contain at least 50% brick, which is required by the zoning ordinance. At its meeting on May 5th, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the Harvest Creek PDD. You know, Patrick or John want to make any comments on this?
I have nothing else to add, but I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? Kate?
So, the summary mentions an existing single-family residence on the south side of the property. Is that inhabited?
I believe it currently is.
Okay, and, and that family has agreed to become part of this development?
They have. They're the current property owners for the site, so I believe the sale includes the balance of the site, and probably one of those conditions is to allow that home to be part of the development, which is rare, but it can work. And in this case, it includes closing their existing driveway from Ridge Road. So the current residents will now access their site through the new road. So the number of curb cuts along Ridge Road won't increase, and all units will access from the proposed road.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Michael?
I just, I just really like that, like, it's part of the benefit. They're proposing a stormwater system that exceeds, that doubles the minimum requirement from Wayne County. I think that's responsible. And so I think this is a good, a good development, and it, and it, I think it's, it's well, like, kind of, like a well-crafted PDD, so I like this.
Okay, Tanya?
Is there a chance in the future it'll be connected to the neighborhood, which is kind of the ridge, the neighborhood, that's not really Cherry Hill Village, but part of Cherry Hill Village, or?
We did ask the applicant about that during the process to see what the possibilities were. To the east, there are existing single-family homes. To the north, there is a possibility, but there's one parcel that separates this development site from Payne Street to the north. And the, my understanding is there's no interest from the property owner to the north to allow a road connection north to Payne Street. It would be nice to have in the future, but it just wasn't anything that was agreed to.
Okay. Sorry, I have another question. I noticed in the information provided on their Eagle permit for, for filling in some wetlands, that they also are able to purchase mitigation credits. And I'm wondering if we can make this same request that I had mentioned for a previous development where we asked that the mitigation take place within Canton Township, if possible?
Sure, we can follow up with the applicant and Eagle on that to see what the possibilities are. I think they were filling about .08 acres, so for something that size, roughly about 3,500 square feet, I'd be interested to know whereabouts the mitigation area is, but we'll ask about in the community.
Thank you.
And it is good to see that the detention basin, basin is going to be larger. I wish more builders would do that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. And on to G10. Consider first reading of amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinance for Outdoor Dining.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendments to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance, which amends Section 6.02 AA, outdoor dining accessory to a restaurant.
Support.
Thank you. In 2021, Canton adopted standards in the zoning ordinance for outdoor dining accessory to restaurant, both on a seasonal, temporary basis and continual basis. Since that time, Canton has approved several outdoor dining applications. After four years, the standards have been mostly successful. However, there are some restaurant owners that have expressed interest in establishing outdoor dining and cannot do so based on the following requirements. All outdoor dining areas must meet all setback requirements except where outdoor dining is permitted within the road right-of-way in Cherry Hill Village. Some restaurant owners have expressed interest in adding outdoor dining in front of their buildings, but the proposed outdoor dining area encroaches into the required front yard setback. Outdoor dining areas are required to be separated from roadways and parking areas by sidewalk or landscape area, not less than five feet in width. Some restaurant owners have expressed interest in having outdoor dining areas that are within the five feet of the parking lot, aisle, or parking space if there are no provisions for barriers. In response to the inquiries, Planning Division staff prepared draft text that would allow the approving authority to approve modifications from this above standards, subject to certain provisions. At its meeting on April 7th, 2025, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance and adopted a motion to recommend approval. From John? John, do you have any, anything you want to add, or Patrick?
Nothing additional to add, but happy to take any questions.
Okay, thanks, Patrick. Any questions or? Michael?
No, no questions. I just saw it was extremely not controversial at the Planning Commission, and I'm just excited to see this. I think it's a step in the, in the right direction for Canton Township, a community that has designed itself in a specific way and has intentionally been trying to open itself up a little bit and allow for some more uniqueness, and so I really look forward to being able to eat outdoors with my family at more locations.
I, I agree with Michael that, you know, this would give more restaurants this opportunity to expand, and, you know, especially in the summer months, and with the, with our Cherry Hill Village construction coming up, we want to attract more businesses there. This would be a great opportunity to develop that area too.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. And we are on to G11, which is consider first amendment, first reading of the amendment of Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinance for Tree and Woodland Preservation.
Madam President Pro Tem, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of a proposed amendments, of the proposed amendments to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances the Charter Township of Canton is provided in the attached ordinance, which amends Article 5A, Forest Preservation and Tree Clearing, Tree and Woodland Preservation.
Support.
Support.
Thank you. In 2023, the Planning Division staff started preparing updates to the Tree and Woodland Preservation Standards of the zoning ordinance. In addition to required amendments to the mitigation provision, many of the current standards were found to be outdated, unclear, or not reflect the modern tree and forestry practices. Since the Tree and Woodland Preservation Standards were last comprehensively updated in 2006, there have been many changes in case law, township priorities, and best practices that require a full analysis and update of the tree. and update of the tree and woodland preservation standards. At the July 30th, 2024 joint meeting between the Township Board of Trustees and Planning Commission, Professor Richard Norton, a professor of urban and regional planning at the University of Michigan, presented a slideshow and described the legal basis for tree regulation and best practices. Canton Township has been greatly assisted by Professor Norton and his graduate-level environmental planning students. During the winter of 2024 semester, the graduate students in Professor Norton's environmental planning class prepared a comprehensive report for the Canton Township titled Guidance for the Designing and Implementing Constitutional Veiled Local Plans and Regulation to Protect Landmark Trees, Woodlands, and Tree Canopies in Michigan. This report was extremely useful to the Planning Division during its revision to Article 5A of the zoning ordinance. After the presentation on July 30th, 2024, the Planning Commission reviewed revisions to the Article 5A of the zoning ordinance at the, at several of its meetings. At its meeting on May 5th, 2025, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed amendments to Article 5A of the zoning ordinance and adopted a motion to recommend approval. John or Patrick, I know Patrick, you were heavily involved. Any, anything you want to add?
Nothing else to add to the report or to the ordinance, but happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I don't have any questions. I was lucky to get kind of an early copy of this and, and kind of look it over. And I really like the idea of requiring permitting for the management of public trees or trees that are on public property. You know, there's a lot of forestry best practices that this will help us ensure that at least the public tree inventory is protected, you know, things like kind of like the, the volcanoing of mulch at the base of a tree, which can lead to rotting the tree and will shorten the life of a tree by 30 or 40 years. You know, that, that kind of stuff, you know, when you plant a tree, you're not really planting it for yourself to enjoy, you're planting it for your children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren to enjoy. And so, I really think it's helpful that we have that mentality. I love the, the tree report that was put in there. It analyzed the 27 acres that we preserved last year at Jesquid Oak and Nature Area. And just really cool the way we can kind of drill down how many trees are on which parcel, what their economic benefit is to the community, how much carbon we're taking out of the atmosphere, what the impact is to ozone layers, all of that stuff, transpiration. It's just really fascinating stuff. I'm extremely grateful that the University of Michigan has worked kind of hand in glove with us on this. And I do think it, it is putting Canton at the forefront when it comes to urban or suburban forestry and environmental protection, which is probably not something people would intuitively say, even just a few decades ago. So, very impressed, and I think that this ordinance is fantastic. And I know it sets us up for securing our Tree City USA designation, so I'm, I'm very excited to see that come through as well.
Good. Kate?
Yeah, everything that, that Michael said, but also, I just want to thank Planning Department, the Planning Commission. I know this has been a long time coming, and we've been waiting for it eagerly. Glad that we're finally at this point and looking forward to adopting it at some point. But, and also, thank you to our partners, U of M, and also the Department of Natural Resources.
Yeah, I, I really, I really liked the, you know, the initial description, the benefits, and detailed description of landmark trees protected and all the other trees, so that the residents can have an idea on, on even their own trees in their backyard. And the information from University of Michigan and about this was also very informative. So, thank you for working on this ordinance.
I agree with all of my colleagues, and Patrick especially, thank you so much, because I know you were the one who kind of got this going, so truly appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A pose? The ayes have it. We'll go on to G12. Consider first reading of the amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinance for Outdoor Dining? Wait, I'm sorry. Outdoor.
Signs.
Signs. I went backwards. Sorry.
Madam President Protam, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendments to Appendix A, zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance, which amends Article 6A Signs, Section 1.03 Definitions, Article 2, General Provisions, Article 4, Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, Article 6, Site Development Standards Applicable to Specific Uses, Article 21, Light Industrial Research District, and Section 27.02, Site Plan Review.
Support?
Support.
Thank you. In 2023, the Planning Division staff worked with other township divisions and departments on the proposed update to the signed standards of the zoning ordinance. Many of the current standards are outdated, unclear, or in some cases, unenforceable. Since the signed standards were last comprehensively updated in 2006, there have been many changes in case law, technology, and best practices that require full analysis and update of the signed standards. At the November 7th, 2023 joint meeting between the Township Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission, Planning Division staff presented on the current issues with the sign regulations in the zoning ordinance and provided a summary of the up, up-and-coming amendment recommendation. After the joint meeting on November 7th, 2023, the Planning Commission reviewed revisions to the sign regulations of the zoning ordinance at several of its meetings. At its meeting on May 5th, 2025, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed amendments to Article 6A and other related sections of the zoning ordinance and adopted a motion to recommend approval. Patrick, do you, do you want to add?
Sure, I've got just one item to add. We received a question from the Youth Advisory Council regarding some of the regulations regarding yard signs. And yard signs is one of the many reasons that we've prepared this update and are going through the amendment process. Currently, in the sign ordinance, yard signs are mostly applicable to real estate signs and political signs. And those types of regulations are content-based, where they're based on the content of the sign itself. And there are a number of court cases that require us to be more content-neutral. And so, in our sign ordinances, we can make distinctions between commercial and non-commercial signs, and we can make distinctions between on-premise signs and off-premise signs. So, for example, the regulations for the yard signs in residential districts, we allow for non-commercial yard signs. So, we don't really regulate the content as long as it's of a, of a non-commercial nature. In residential districts, there's allowed six square feet per sign and 24 square feet total, with a max sign height of four feet, and a setback of five feet from all lot lines. So, in the ordinance also, there's a definition of what a commercial message is. And for a message that is charitable solicitation, that's a non-commercial message. Something like Relay for Life or SJ5K, where people put a sign in their yard, that's a non-commercial message that, under the proposed ordinance, would be permitted. We have some text in the yard signs that we're still working with our legal counsel on, that will have some additional information prior to the second reading. Those are some of the provisions that we've included in terms of signs, additional signs allowed during periods of elections, and additional signage allowed during a period where a lot or a unit is for sale or lease. So, the implication is like a real estate sign or an election sign, but it doesn't regulate content, it regulates the time period. So, that's something where we're working with our legal counsel in a little bit more detail, just to see what some of the more recent case laws said about sign regulations, where you're trying to allow people a little bit more signage during certain periods of the year or based on certain circumstances, but we also want to make sure that it's legally defensible. So, we're still working through that. We'll have more information prior to the second reading, just to make sure that we're in agreement with our legal counsel on that, and some of the questions that we have, we're able to come back with answers to. So, that was the major item I wanted to point out. There are a number of other amendments there, most of which allow a little bit more flexibility, are a little bit more responsive to some of the comments we've received over the last several years from businesses that just want a little bit more visibility from the road. So, with that, I'll end the summary and happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Is a yard sale a commercial sign?
I think a yard sale would be something like on-premise commercial. And if there was signage that was related to a garage sale or a yard sale, those sign regulations, they might be best administered through a separate part of the code that regulates garage sales, so that if someone has a garage sale, they have an accessory sign. That could be under the general ordinance regulations of garage sales. It's best regulated there and not necessarily in the sign code itself, because it gets mixed in with other uses. So, for example, in the ordinance that's before the board, we've got some sign regulations very specific to gas stations, but those are located in a separate article where gas stations are regulated, because they have illuminated signs for the price of fuel, and there's public safety, and there's legal reasons for having that particular electronic messaging only for fuel prices. We have some signage regulations for home occupations, where they have a small nameplate, but that is in a separate section of the ordinance that regulates the home occupation. So, it's pulled out of the article on the sign ordinances and is more effectively regulated under the use regulations because of how tight it is to that particular use.
I see. Thank you. Very thorough.
Kate?
Yeah, can you just walk me through the, the thinking around murals and them only being allowed on township property?
Sure. So, murals are defined as something having a non-commercial message, so it's nothing for commercial advertising. And it's something where we've had the discussions internally in terms of the township wanting to put murals on, on township buildings. And in that case, it's a relatively easy thing to regulate, because we're, we're almost self-regulating it. But nevertheless, murals are signage. And so, some communities regulate murals, and some communities are very expansive in terms of having them on commercial buildings and throughout their communities. And that's something that, in the long run, we may see. The murals are a recent addition to our signed ordinance, based on some discussions we've had internally about wanting to expand murals in certain public buildings, notably recreation buildings. And so, what we wanted to do is we wanted to have provisions in the ordinance that allowed for Canton Township to put murals on its building, that it was content that was regulated by Canton itself on Canton's own buildings, and of a non-commercial nature, so that it's, it's public speech on a, in a public forum, regulated by the same entity that owns the building. Trying to tightly regulate that, just to make sure that the rights that the township is, has for itself under the ordinance are unique. Going forward, we could look to amend the ordinance and expand provisions for murals on other types of buildings. It's just something we really haven't reviewed during the comprehensive review of the signed ordinance. And we may be coming forward to the board in the future with an amendment that deals with murals on commercial buildings or non-public types of buildings. And we would probably look at other communities that have successfully implemented that for guidance in terms of how we can do that. We'd probably look at something like limiting the area, making sure the message is non-commercial, and perhaps a permitting process, and maybe some other guidelines, too, just to make sure that it's well-maintained and it's well-placed.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up with that question?
Please.
I'm curious. So, like if I go to the city of Plymouth right now, and I walk downtown, there will be a number of art, murals, I assume. Would that, are you familiar with what I'm talking about? If I, if you walk in downtown Plymouth, like displayed on the Community Financial Credit Union exterior of the building, you will find two paintings or murals done by a Plymouth artist named Tony Roco. If you walk, if you go into the parking garage adjacent on the sides of a lot of the commercial buildings, you will see other paintings by either the same artist or different artists. If you walk down the alleyway toward Penniman Avenue, you will see about three other paintings. Next to the Cellar Wine Place, there's a number of paintings. And then next to the Pen Bar and Grill, there's another painting. And so, it's clear, this is like a DDA kind of program, where they are promoting public art as a way to build sense of place, but they see a value in, in that. Would, would something like that fall under the, the definition of a mural, that's clearly not on government property? I think almost all of these are on private property. Would that be considered a mural, and would that be banned in Canton if somebody wanted to do something similar? Like, let's say, Community Financial, which has two locations in Canton, said, "We want to put artwork on the outside of those buildings as well." Would that be allowed, consistent with what they have in Plymouth, or would that not be allowed currently under this ordinance?
If it was on the face of the building and painted on the face, it probably would not be allowed. The only way to allow it would be if it was applied to the window, because we do allow for window signage up to a certain percentage of the window pane. We haven't received any inquiries from businesses expressing interest in doing that. I think if we wanted to get something off the ground, I think the best places to start would be in the DDA and in Cherry Hill Village, and probably talk to business owners, building owners, as well as people in the art community that will participate, just to see what their wants would be, what their priorities would be, and figure that out first, and then work on the regulatory structure afterward, once we kind of know what the, what the sense is and what the desires are. I think it's a great thing to consider. If it's something the community wants, there's several different ways that we can regulate it within the ordinance and still protect what we want to protect.
Thank you for that thoughtful response.
I, I had the same question.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
A pose? Ayes have it. 13. Consider appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Council.
Madam President Protam, I move to approve for the appointments of Dylan Wobkenberg and Sarana Fleming to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Council.
Support.
Thank you. The Community Development Block Grant Advisory Council, CDBG, has two vacancies due to unexpected resignations. The Board of Trustees Interview Committee interviewed multiple candidates, and they recommend Dylan Wokenberg and Serena Fleming, who goes by Serena Burger, to fill those vacancies. Kate, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, so the Board of Trustees Interview Committee did meet and interviewed several people, and we really thought that Dylan and Sarana, you know, stood out. people, and we really thought that Dylan and Serena stood out. They have a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy, and we think they will be great additions to this advisory council.
It's nice to hear there's a lot of people applying, and I hope they continue to apply because these are wonderful committees and commissions to be on. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and we will go on to G14. And that is consider a reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority, DDA.
Madam President, pro tem, I move to approve the reappointment of Bartley Patterson to the Canton Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term ending on May 31, 2029.
Support.
Thank you. Bart Patterson, who has served as a member of the Canton Downtown Development Authority, is seeking reappointment following the recent expiration of his term. Canton Economic Development Department works directly with the DDA and reports that Bart has proven excellent service and has good attendance and has been a valuable member of the DDA. Comment or anything? Yes, please.
Yes, the interview committee also interviewed Mr. Patterson, and we were really impressed with his knowledge. You know, not only has he been a great member of the DDA, but he has a lot of institutional knowledge that would be missed if, you know, he wasn't reappointed. So, we appreciate his service in the past and look forward to him serving again.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Righty, and now we go on to public comments. Do we have any public comments? Any, yes. If you want to step up to the podium, please. Yes, thank you. Public comments, yes.
Yeah, go right up there.
Please, yes. Yeah, thank you. And you have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Jane Waters. I am a co-owner of a unit at Abbey Woods Condominiums in Canton. I came home about a week and a half ago on a Saturday to find Detroit Edison, or DTE, planting flags all over the lawn, and I received no communication whatsoever from Ripple. And in the mail yesterday, I received, or on the ninth, I received two letters, both of which were addressed to the occupant, and they had the same information. Many of our homeowners were not informed of any of this, and it has been very confusing. We're 55 units, and I would say that probably less than half received any communication from Ripple. We have several questions, and I understand the representative will discuss some of those with me at the end of the meeting or after the meeting. But I just want to say that it is very confusing in that the lack of communication as to what's going on, at least in our complex, and a lot of the neighbors are confused that several are elderly, and they want to know what's going on. Our board has not been informed of any of this, and it has caused problems throughout the community. Today, we had representatives from the Water Department trying to locate our water, source of water. I understand that there's been issues with the subdivision to the rear of us that had issues with the gas lines being punctured or ruptured, or there were issues. We've received information from one of our neighbors that they contacted the representative for Ripple, and they were informed that the door hangers that we were supposed to receive prior to beginning this project are illegal in Michigan, that we will not be receiving them. That's what the neighbor was told. She would be here with us tonight, but her golf outing is more important at the moment. So, I guess what I would like to do is have a conversation with the representative from Ripple as to several questions that we have, and hopefully, we can get some additional communication out to my neighbors. As I said, several are elderly, and it's confusing. We have people coming in and out of the community that no one knows who they are. They're in unmarked vehicles that are doing some of the markings in there. So, it has caused quite a bit of consternation. So, I would appreciate meeting with the representative after the meeting. If not, if the Board of Trustees could give me some information as to who to contact, we'd be more than appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma's got it. Okay. Any other, yes, if you want to step to the podium, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is, is it on?
Yes, yeah, we can hear you, thank you.
If not, I'll yell louder. My name is George Cordy. I'm the current board president of the HOA at Lynx at Fellows Creek. I've got two major concerns. I was here last fall, one of them dealing with priority waste. Within our complex, after much discussion with Canton as far as what priority waste was supposed to be doing, as far as picking up the blue garbage cans, well, the condo association passed a very strict trash policy, which follows Canton's guidelines supposedly. Again, I was here this past fall complaining about priority waste, picking up individual garbage bags instead of just the blue bags and the trash receptacles. They continue to still do that. And so, when we levy a fine, we always get the complaints, "Well, Canton, the priority waste is still picking up the garbage. What are we supposed to do?" I constantly tell people within our newsletter and whatnot that they, you know, "If you need a bigger can, contact Canton." I just wanted to at least let, you know, Canton know that priority waste, at least in the Lynx at Fellows Creek, is still coming around. When they come around, the guy behind them will pick up the bags, as well as the blue thing, but it's hard to enforce. And they also, I think from my understanding, if I remember right, any cardboard's supposed to be in the recycle, not out, they continue to pick up the cardboard as well. Number two, this one's going to be, trying to be, I don't know how to phrase this, a potential serious problem at the corner of Palmer and Lots with the mosque and the school. I know the police has been out at least twice videotaping on Fridays. It is a nightmare, to put it bluntly, between one and three, and we are very concerned. And I know I've had at least two residents file complaints with the police department as well as with Wayne County. I know Palmer Road is a Wayne County road, but the parking, at least on the Wayne County, I mean, on the Fellows Creek side, doesn't have signs on it. We're trying to get Wayne County to do that. We don't know how successful we're going to be. Our biggest concern is if an emergency vehicle happened to come down, they would have a very difficult time, especially a fire truck. The cars park out into the road, and we're just worried, and when they go to disperse, it's like horn honking, vowel language, just really upsetting. And we're very worried that potentially one of these times, someone's seriously going to get hurt, because when they're on our side of the road, which would be the south side, they'll walk right out in front of cars, and even little kids will. And we're just wondering if, I know there is no parking signs starting at the guardrail heading, to be heading west, why the police can't enforce those no parking? And I know when the officer came out, one of the fellow person that made the complaint asked the officer, and he says, "Yeah, technically, I can, but I just, right now, I chose not to." It was a kind of vague answer, and I think we maybe caught him off guard, but we're just, I'm wondering now, why, it's a small little no parking sign, and it starts at the guardrail and goes all the way west, and on both sides, that's like 60 cars, 30 on each side. That's how many cars are up and down the road. And we, like I said, we're just very concerned that some, one of these times, either you may need an emergency vehicle come down there and you can't get through there, or someone's going to get hurt. And then, if I could, as a moment afterwards, if I have a brief moment, if I could talk to the police chief, if that's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Okay. Do any of the directors have anything they want to say or announce?
I don't know if you've heard, there's a little festival this weekend in Heritage Park, so we're excited about that. I know the community development team with John LaFever and his crew have a lot of activities going on, and all the other departments have heavy involvement as well, and we expect to have a fantastic weekend with a carnival out there, concerts, a lot of activity out there. And then, last Friday, we had a very successful celebration of the Eid event out at Independence Park, which was a great partnership with that group.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ball here. I appreciate the comments you're spot on with the issues with parking at Palmer and Lots. I've been working, I think the public needs to hear this, been working with the president of the mosque for a few weeks now, and we're at the point where we're finding alternative parking to help alleviate those issues, because you're absolutely correct. We have some emergency issues that we need to address, and we have a great partnership with the president at the mosque. So, hopefully, that'll alleviate in time. The township's looking for other alternatives, maybe some temporary parking options with some private owners nearby. So, we're still working on it. It doesn't mean we won't enforce. We do, in parking situations, quite use a logical approach, especially when it comes to religious events. At any Protestant, Catholic mosque, it doesn't matter, we try to take a logical approach. It's reasonable to not cite people at a religious event, but at the same time, we're mindful of a religious event, so. And also in the crowd, we have Eva Davis here. You know, we celebrated the work of Ted Kerrigan tonight, and just a little background, she stepped up, and she's still in the committee today, but she stepped up to be the chair as we moved that a few years ago, so I'd like to thank her publicly for that, and also the over 10 years that she supported us with the CCIC. And she just came off as the chair recently, and we'll probably do something in the near future about that, but I just want to acknowledge they have the director here in the audience.
Just to piggyback on Director Holmberger, MSD team is out there supporting. We're making sure that generators are hooked up properly and safely. And then, our inspection services team is also doing their due diligence and following up on permits that are pulled to make sure everything else is safe as well. And then additionally, I do have business cards for the Director of Government Affairs and the Director of Construction for Ripple Fiber. They can put anybody that has questions in touch with their marketing and communications team so that we can alleviate these issues going forward, and we can hopefully get some resolution as to why some things were done without communication, and we're better for it going forward, so I'm happy to stick around and talk with them as well.
Thank you very much, John. Go. Nothing? Okay. Anya?
Just enjoy the good weather and have a great time at Liberty Fest, and this June is Pride Month, so have a pride.
And I'm sorry, John, I apologize. You guys are way in the back. I missed you.
It's all right. Just wanted to add that everything's, the Liberty Festival's on our website. I'll have a packet coming out to all of the board members here the next day or so, but I encourage everyone to check that out. Fireworks Friday night, don't miss that out. I know it used to be on Saturday, but we do that on Friday to give ourselves a rain date, so make sure you're ready for Friday night. And get in the park by 6:00 PM because the roads do close, so it's hard to access the park because it's so popular. So, make sure you make plans to get in and come out and enjoy. Turn it over, I don't know. Our youth council wants to make any comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we had a great year. Over the past year, we've accomplished a lot, from conducting the youth sports survey to continuing our DEI initiatives at the block. And looking ahead, we're all really excited to see what LSIAC accomplishes. Thank you.
You. Rochelle, do you have anything from HR? Jamie from Fire, nothing? Okay, you're good? Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to leave you guys out. Michael?
I'm just extremely excited about Liberty Fest. It's one of my favorite times of the year. I will probably be going on Thursday with my kids, so you will see us riding lots of rides that are age-appropriate, and they will have way too much sugar. It will be fantastic. On top of that, and June being Pride, Pride Month in Canton, we have a lot of great activities, including the penalty, it'll crescendo on June 26th for Pride Outside in Heritage Park. And I think putting Pride this year in context, that there have been increased complaints of things like hate crimes or people being targeted because of their religion or their race or their gender or their sexual orientation is important, and I think that everybody this year needs to really focus hard on acknowledging the humanity in every single person, being kind, caring, compassionate, work really hard to make space for every single person in Canton Township to have a place in Canton Township. I know that's what I'm going to be doing this month. Thank you.
Kate?
So, first of all, I wanted to say hi to, I think, the Boy Scouts who aren't back, and thank you for attending our meeting. And I would be remiss if I didn't say happy anniversary to my husband, because I'm here tonight and not with him, so.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you. And also, yes, enjoy Liberty Fest and strive to be kind and welcoming to everyone.
Thank you. And yes, it's wonderful to see the Scouts here. I hope you're enjoying our meeting. And June is a wonderful month. We're going to be having the festival. Pride Outside is going to be great. Juneteenth, we'll be celebrating that as well as Father's Day. So, a lot of stuff are happening in the month of June, and I'm happy to say my, I'm going to have my grandson's first birthdays in June, and I have another grandchild expected on June 22nd, too. So, a lot of fun things for my family and I'm sure all of yours. So, everybody have a wonderful June and make sure that everybody remembers this is a welcoming community, and everybody should be treated respectfully. So, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you.
We got to call the vote.
Oh, call the vote. Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. Okay, we're out of here.
Let's hit the road.